Sorry for the delay. We've got a lot going on tonight. We've got all the theater ready here, so. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order, the January thirty first City Council Meeting. The clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Brad McFerrin, dear, Paul Turner?
Here.
Eckler, here. De Mersa?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President.
Here. At this time, I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invitation which will be given tonight by the Reverend Tom Goh of Kidder Memorial Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Please be seated.
Hear these words from the Old Testament prophet Jeremiah. Now the word of the Lord came to me saying, before I formed you in the womb, I knew you. And before you were born, I consecrated you. I appointed you a prophet to the nations. And then I said, ah, Lord God, truly, I do not know how to speak, for I am only a boy. But the Lord said to me, do not say, I am only a boy, for you shall go to all to whom I send you, and you shall speak whatever I command you. Do not be afraid of them, for I am with you to deliver you, says the Lord. Then the Lord put out his hand and touched my mouth, and the Lord said to me, and now I have put my words in your mouth. Jeremiah wasn't really a boy. He was a bitter pipe perp. He was a young man. He didn't feel up to the job. At times, we all feel that way. But as you look to your source of wisdom, your higher power, your God, however you understand that, you will find wisdom. You will find words that matter like Jeremiah did. And you will find words that make a difference. May it be so for all of you and for all of us here. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This time, I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the December twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, and January third, twenty twenty inaugural session. So moved by Councilman Eckler. Do you have any messages from the mayor this evening?
Yes. Were you doing public comment? Message from there?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, President, all the council members, I am honored this evening to support and to recognize Dolores Thompson, our city historian. We have a presentation tonight from several folks that would like to talk about the work that she's done in her many, many years as city historian here in the city of Jamestown. I'd like to first invite up our current historian, Ashley Sensky, who would like to say a few words. And she's got a few other folks that want to remember and honor her history, her legacy. And I am pleased to note that my understanding is that she is watching tonight, although she can't make it here. She is going to be watching this and hearing what we're saying about her. She's going to be taking notes carefully, so watch what she say. But I have one, I'd like to introduce Ashley Sensky, our city historian.
Thank you, Mayor Sunquist. Thank you. Just let me all, we'll try to speak real close to the microphone. And thank you to the council as well for holding this special event in honor of Dolores. I'm incredibly excited to be here. I'm super grateful that you asked me to help and be involved. As a succeeding city historian, it is not lost on me the enormous, literally enormous shoes I am stepping into Phil. Dolores has made such a large impact on the city, whether the average citizen realizes it or not. And we want to make sure that she understands how greatly appreciative we all are for all that she has done over forty-one years. Forty-one years. In preparation for this evening, I reached out to past and present historical marker committee members in hopes that they would want to share some thoughts on their time with working alongside Dolores. Norman Carlson, whom I'm sure several of us are familiar with, conveyed to me several lengthy stories that I couldn't possibly fit in tonight. But he did make sure to note how hard Dolores worked in her position as historian, and that he not only respected her for that, but also as someone who helped keep classical music alive in Jamestown. Russ Dietrich spoke to me on the phone about his memory and thoughts of Dolores, referring to her as an exemplary person, always doing everything for the community, and especially so when it came to the area's local history. He remarked to me just how much she contributed and how grateful he is for all she has done for Jamestown's history, and that he only has the utmost respect for her. Tracy Langworthy wanted to share her thoughts as well. She said, quote, because of Dolores, more people not only know about Jamestown's history, they also appreciate the diversity of individuals who have made that history so rich. Many of those individuals, especially women, would have been lost to our local memory were it not for Dolores's dedication to researching and sharing their stories. Jamestown has been so incredibly fortunate to have had a historian of such ability and such dedication. Karen Livsey shared some of her thoughts with me, too. She said, quote, it is almost thirty years ago that Dolores invited me to join the committee. Through those years, I have enjoyed being a part of researching and sharing Jamestown's history under her leadership. Her enthusiasm and dedication made the many meetings, often over breakfast and dinner, an educational and enjoyable occasion with other like-minded committee members. Thank you, Dolores. And last but not least, I want to turn things over to another longtime marker committee member, but also an old family friend of Dolores's, Art Osterdahl, to share a few remarks.
Thank you, Ashley. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, city council, Mayor Sunquist. I'm most honored to be here just to speak a few words about Dolores. She was a historian for the city of Jamestown from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand nineteen. That's forty-one years. And captain director of the history society then, from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-two. During those years, of course, attended to the city historian is the historical, historic marker committee. I joined that committee myself. To get a general idea how long ago that was, when Russ Dietrich retired, I sat with Dolores at her table. I said, you know, I really want to have a marker to George Kemp. And that's how long ago that was. So I want to say nineteen ninety-one is about those years. Our families go back a long way. One hundred years is a matter of time. And Dolores is not that old. Her father, Einar Wolf, and my grandfather, Carlson, were in the Swedish Navy together in the same regiment. And I have a photograph of them, three or four men apart. And neither one of them knew the other had come to the United States, much less Jamestown, New York, until one of them was coming down North Main Street, and the other one was going up North Main Street. They ran each other on the street. Yeah? Wolf, is that you? Yeah? Carlson, is that you? So maybe got to pick up their friendship in the United States as well. But our families have known each other many, many, many years. So to you, City Council and Mayor Sunquist, the city historian's position could not be in better hands than Ashley and Large Shoes and Phil, for sure. But we're very, very grateful as the historical marker committee for your continued support. And the marker for this year is a secret. It's only a secret because we don't even know what's happening. So thank you for your anticipated support. Thanks very much, folks. I'm very grateful and honored.
And so next, we'd like to invite former Council President Brad Raff up to say a few words himself.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Mr. President, for letting me speak. It feels a little weird to be standing here. I'm used to having sat down for ten years. Thank you, all of you, either side of the aisle, for all the work that you all continue to do. I know how it is. But I'm not here to talk to you guys, so I'm going to ignore you. So Dolores, I hope you can see me and hear me. When I found out that the council and the city was going to recognize your work as city historian, I asked if I could be here because I've known you very well. We were at the Unitarian Church a lot of times. We always had interesting conversations. And I always knew it was budget time, not because the mayor sent the budget down, but because Dolores would either call me or email and say, is the fifteen-hundred dollars in there for the marker? And I immediately would run and look to make sure it was there. It was the very first thing I did every single time. She was really committed to recognizing the history of this city. And there's so many other things Dolores had done over the years that I can't even begin to talk about. But Dolores, I don't come here very often. In fact, I don't think I've been here a long time. I came here to especially honor you because you're the kind of person that makes this city what it is. When I got here, I came here and didn't know any people very well, but got to know a lot of people really well and respect a lot of people. And there's no one that I respect more than you. So I hope you have a good evening, and I hope you could feel the warmth and the appreciation of the council, the mayor, the staff, all the people in this room. You did a great job for a very long time, and our words, I mean, heard our words, can't begin to express our gratitude. But Dolores, all I can say is thank you. Thank you so much for being who you are. Thank you.
So council members, a quick applause. Tonight, we will vote on a resolution, a resolution honoring Dolores Thompson for her work. Although we do want to interrupt this just briefly so we can take a photo, but to recognize that Dolores's daughter Cathy Gould is here with us today, as well as her legacy continues to live on. Many of you may or may not know that our comptroller, Ryan Thompson, her grandson, works for the city. So we are very honored to continue to have Dolores's legacy. Still making sure that there is a historical marker program in the fund every year. Wouldn't mind, President, if you could come down, and anyone who spoke on behalf of Dolores for a quick picture. Both sides. And Ryan, if you'd like to join right together. All right. Thanks so much, guys. Okay. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ashley, and Art, and Brad, and one other note to Dolores. It's been a long time, very, very solid resident of the great Lord Two. Congratulations for all the work. Is there any other messages? At this time, we have opportunities for the persons to address the council. If you'd like to address the city council this evening, please come up to one of the mics, please state your name and home address, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. And move up to address the council this evening.
I am here in New York. I live in the Hotel Jamestown, downtown Jamestown, one one oh St. George Street. I am proud to be in Jamestown, a very proactive city, and working for community issues. I'm going to sit here with purple lights on the morning tonight until that's in recognition of the suicide prevention, excellent cause. Last month, the entire month, the building was lit up in honor of a friend of mine, a friend of the family of Lexi, who was the girl, sixteen, a fifteen-year-old girl tragically hit by a vehicle. I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about the next victim, the next person to be hit by a vehicle, whether it's caused by a snowstorm and a slight slippery road, or whether it's caused by a distracted driver or a cell phone user. I am here to talk about that next person who does not see it coming. Situational awareness is very important to teach our children. Know what is around you at all times. The mantra I learned as a child was, stop, look, listen, and think before you enter the road. Even on a green light, you don't know if the person who's driving is going to recognize his red light. And it happens. It happens tragically, not just by bad drivers, but by people who are just caught by circumstance. We have to teach our children that green light does not mean go. Red light means stop. Green light means to stop. Look in all directions. Listen for anything you can not hear, and then think, is it actually safe to cross that street? That is my message for this evening. I'd like to thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council this evening?
I'm Doug Sherman. I live at two two five Long Street in Jamestown. And as I've done before, I've made it a point to thank people who do things for us in this community. And tonight, I would like to thank the Jamestown Fire Department for all they have done, all that they do. And I look forward to what they do for us in the future. Now, why I'm here is going to be written and read. Normally, I talk from the mouth without hesitation, but I wanted to get on the record right. And first of all, I worked with Dolores Thompson when I was a young planner in this city. What a wonderful woman. And she gave great legacy to the women that are interested in our history. So I also would like to join in and our thank you for all the work that she's done. I am here tonight to address my concerns and thoughts about the Jamestown Board of Public Utilities and its future. Mayor Sunquist has just presented in the recent State of the City message. And his reference to the BPU with potential for broadband introduction and one hundred year reference to bring the local public power to Jamestown. The biggest driver of our precarious and precious economic viability and its sustainability is a future of the electoral operations of the Jamestown Board of Public Utilities. It is now under siege, and its future will be costly and dramatically changing. We all will be impacted by the existing and pending outcomes of the New York State Energy Plan and its companion, the New York State Climate Change Act. As our mayor has given a State of the City message, we now need a State of the Jamestown BPU message. To make public to all our city electric ratepayers, both in and outside the city, this should be done jointly by the BPU General Manager and the mayor, as he is the seated BPU president by his elected office. The future financial viability and generation capacity for the public utility is in the process of coming under an energy malstorm driven by this New York Energy Plan and its companion, State Climate Change Act. The BPU must now and will have to be fully prepared and compliant with it. These acts will have major financial effects on outcomes on our electric ratepayers and Jamestown Board of Public Utilities transmission and service area. The Jamestown BPU is bored, did not talk to the public, and all the ratepayers of our city or the city council body. Yes, they have Jamestown BPU board meetings, but who goes and who knows? These electrical user-based associations, and that's pretty much all of us, will be greatly impacted and are defined assets to this outcome. Why have they not been engaged in support mechanisms and provided advocacy for the Jamestown BPU? Our elected officials and public private ratepayers and the local media have not registered requests or called upon for the State of the BPU presentation. The time is to do so is now, not months or next year. What comes out of the New York State Energy Scoping Document, which is currently out for conversation and comments, will be generational for all our electric users, no matter what cost, location, or type of electrical consumption or conviction they may have. How will the BPU respond? What will they say and do? All city and outward city ratepayers and elected officials need to know, for they should have input, for they have a direct and vital service interest. While the city of Jamestown residents, the responsible elected officials, that's you, and of course, the owners of the Jamestown BPU, and thus ultimately are responsible for all assets and liabilities. I understand two members of the city council will have to be appointed to Jamestown BPU board. I trust, though, that have been identified will want to do this and know what they are in for and going through a vast learning experience in the process of utility knowledge and its management. This must and should be a critical concern to them concerning the complex conversation on what is coming in the energy use and development future for New York State and on the city of Jamestown and our Jamestown BPU. Councilman Faulkner, and correct me, Mr. Faulkner, if I'm wrong, to my understanding, is a licensed electrician. Is that true?
I'm a journeyman electrician.
You're a journeyman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why was he not chosen as elected council appointment to our Jamestown BPU? It would have been the first time an appointment to the Jamestown BPU board as a licensed electrician, either as elected or as community appointed member, has ever been done. It is obvious, or should be, that the decision of the mayor is his choice. He can appoint his board members, and the BPU is part of his domain. However, he chose not to appoint the returning requested board members, certainly not based on the lack of knowledge and their experience. This has happened before. I was there. And it set the Jamestown BPU board residential knowledge level back years in a replacement venue and value. It also created turmoil issues for the staff. That's a fact. This will now happen again. It will take the Jamestown BPU staff months, if not years, to indoctrinate exposed, foreign people to the BPU operation. It needs further applications and now directly results in new committee chairmanships and a new chairman of the BPU, all from the existing members. These new appointments aspects are vital and important contributions to the success of the Jamestown BPU. I'm almost done. I am not here to defend or support any of these appointments, or ask to restate the past members who are not reappointed despite the fact they wanted to return. It is the mayor's choice, as I said, and the city council has approval. It is only the future and operation of Jamestown BPU I care about. So to be a silent spectator, and you know I'm not, and a sidelined seated citizen, which I am not, is not my nature on energy-related issues especially. I'm going to have the years of experience and knowledge to do so. I raise this warning flag and now encourage our city council to be prepared to fully understand and acknowledge what is coming down to the Jamestown BPU or city. I trust they will be fully engaged in the outcome and its future. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the council?
I'm Justin Hubbard, I live in eighteen St. George Street. I currently serve on the Human Rights Commission. I was contacted about two weeks ago by our mayor that my appointment for the Human Rights Commission would most likely not be approved by council. This is really disappointing to me because I truly value my part on the Human Rights Commission and believe that my role has been valuable. On May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, a forty-six-year-old black man by the name of George Floyd was murdered by police officers in Minneapolis, Minnesota. As a response, the entire world hit the streets. And as you know, I was the leader of the rallies and protests here in Jamestown. A few days after the rally, I was contacted personally by our mayor, Eddie, that the city's response to these rallies and protests would be to recommission our Human Rights Commission. At that point, I felt that it was my responsibility to apply for the commission and to eventually serve. When interviewing me for the Human Rights Commission, our mayor asked me what my philosophy would be and how I would serve the city. My philosophy as a history teacher comes from the Enlightenment scholar John Locke, who is the creator of the idea of natural rights, that our rights cannot be given to us by the government, that they are in fact given to us by nature or by God, and that the government can only take those rights away. So on the Human Rights Commission, I thought that it was my duty to make sure that the government and other people in power do not infringe upon or take away the rights of the people of Jamestown. In pursuit of that, I brought passion and dedication because that's what I believe was required of me, and that's why I believe I was picked for this position. I believe because of this passion and dedication, that's why many people reached out to me with issues that they've had in our city. Serving on the commission, I've heard many issues of discrimination when it comes to religion, race, and sexuality. Even though I knew that some of these complaints were about members of council, and that that would make some members of this council unhappy with me for bringing them to the table, I knew that it was my duty to do so. I also believe that the passion I brought to this position made it so that people could feel free to contact me when dealing with very stressful issues. In fact, I was contacted by people that were dealing with discrimination when it comes to employment because of their LGBTQ identity for one of our nonprofits in the area. I brought that to the Human Rights Commission, and it has been taken care of since then. Well, I knew that my role on the Human Rights Commission and the way I served in it wouldn't make me many fans. I've been called a troublemaker, a radical, and many other things. I've been told that I'm anti-police, that I've destroyed my reputation and made many enemies. And I believe that it's all been worth it because that's my requirement as a member of the Human Rights Commission and as a just a citizen in Jamestown. Whatever I've done in my public life, I have done in the pursuit of justice and representation for the marginalized people of Jamestown. It hasn't made me popular, but I believe that doing the right thing rarely does. I hope that the council allows me to continue to serve this city as a member of the Human Rights Commission, but if not, I will let you know that I will continue to Rights Commission, but if not, I will let you know that I will continue to serve the people of Jamestown, especially those that are marginalized. I will speak truth to power, and as John Lewis said, I will continue to get into good trouble. Thank you.
Would you like to address the council?
Melissa Pennini, 306 Faulkner Street, Jamestown, New York. There's a lot of things I'd like to say right now, but the one thing that I would really like to say is that I ask you, as a council, to please not allow Mr. Hubbard to be on the Human Rights Commission. The one fact, and this will be him quoted verbatim, is that I can only... Let me talk to something. So, let me, let me back up a minute. I've watched every single Human Rights Commission meeting, several of them a couple times, up at night till 1:00 in the morning, because this gentleman has not only attacked me twice publicly, called me a racist and a bigot. And when I watched him in the Human Rights Commission meetings, I thought to myself, what is going on here? I contacted Elliot Romando, and nothing happened. I wrote to the mayor. And I'm just asking you, as the city council, that have the ability to remove this gentleman from the commission, please do so, because he doesn't belong there. He has the, he has the ability to have information through the city of Jamestown, and gets to choose if he wants to run it in the Human Rights Commission or his Jamestown Justice Coalition, okay? I've watched this. I'm not coming to you with just knowledge that I made up. This is factual. So I went to a meeting, okay? I had my five minutes, and the dude broke the open meetings policy by kicking everyone out. He said, "We need to do an executive session right now." And you know what I, the only reason I was there was because I was trying to help the dude out. I was trying to tell him, "Don't bring your own agenda to the table, because that's not where it belongs. If you want to come to this table and you want to be the person that you want to be, be it, but don't make the whole table thick like you. We need to write this letter, we need to go to the Board of Public Utilities, or Board of Education, we got to get rid of the Jamestown Red Raider, everything. We're just going to get rid of it. Ban it, get rid of it all." And I'm sorry, you know what? I, I have been contemplating speaking publicly about this for a long time, because there is backlash. Mr. Hubbard knows how to trash people. He knows how to talk about people, but we all do, okay? And I ask you, because this is the one thing that I will quote, there were subgroups made out of this commission, okay? Disability, there was educational, there was supposed to be a faith-based group. I don't remember hearing much about that afterwards. There was an LGBTQ plus AI, whatever that is, okay? I get it, I'm gay, I've been gay since I was 18. And I don't feel that, like, having these, all these subgroups, he's like, "Oh, well, if we're going to have a black group, we got to have that run by a black person, and if it's a Hispanic group, it needs to be run by Hispanic people." The only reason I took the LGBTQ plus AI group is because of my knowledge, there's no one of that group in this commission. So right there, he labeled every single one of those people, because they don't wear a rainbow on their sleeve. Maybe there was a gay person on that commission that isn't obligated. That is wrong. That is wrong. And so, I'm going to end right now, because I could go on for days, but I have been discriminated against by Mr. Hubbard. He called an executive session in the Human Rights Commission unable to talk about me, because I wrote a counter petition against his to keep the Red Raider name the same, to keep the pride and the dignity in, in the city of Jamestown. Because if you really paid attention, the roots go back to them. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing that?
Thanks, Mr. Champ, for pointing out one thing. I'm not here to talk about the BPU, but the city council should be aware, and certainly the mayor, that it is one of the most competitive things that we have to keep Jamestown competitive. So thanks for pointing that out. I'm here to ask a question tonight about our tax bills. Over the last couple of years, it's been noted on the tax bills that there's a, a new or an updated valuation of our properties, but there hasn't been any explanation of that valuation in the tax bills. It hasn't been communicated, to my knowledge. I'm hoping that the city council can communicate why that is, and if there has been something in the tax bills, I look back to 2019, as to the valuation is now looking like an equalization rate. Hopefully, we're not going to go back to that primitive system. I thought that the last administration eliminated that, but it seems like it's popping up on our tax bills again. So if there's something that can be communicated on that, that'd be fantastic, and I think that the taxpaying public really deserves to understand why that's on our tax books. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Good evening, my name's Anthony Tona, and I live at 144 Clifton Avenue in Jamestown. And I want to refer to the January 27, 2022 paper, front page titled "Completely Unacceptable." First, I hope someone can answer this question after this five-minute period. First, I'd like to ask the chief of the council, and if somebody responds, did the police under Chief Snell's tenure send cars to schools when kids were going to school and were kids, and when kids were leaving the schools for protection, safety, et cetera? And is Chief Jackson continuing that policy? Again, if you read the paper, concerns traffic issues at schools, and this is just another example where people in the city feel they can violate traffic laws, and they do violate traffic laws because they know they can get away with it, there's no police enforcement, there's not enough enforcement, and as you're aware, from my personal experiences and the evidence that I brought here, there were other issues, including large-scale fireworks in June, I brought that in. Also, the issue with the arterial on Camp Street, I also brought that, presented that to the council. All kinds of things happening in the city around me. I drive through this city all the time, I see constantly speeding, traffic violations, noise, just not enough enforcement. Secondly, I had a little conversation with the superintendent Friday of schools, and Mr. Whitaker stated to me that, as far as he knows, since he's been the superintendent, there are no more crossing guards at any school in the city of Jamestown. Obviously, that's an issue. He said he's working closely with the city, and I hope he does. The crossing guard issue came up in this article, where also reckless driving, speeding in school zones, and clogging up the street at Love School was a primary issue, and obviously, he was also reporting the Jamestown editorial, an inference of why the Jamestown police took so long to enforce these issues. And the whole problem is the police aren't enforcing enough, they need to start enforcing issues, in my regard, and for the public safety, for, you know, for the public safety of our kids. I just want to say one more thing about the budget. I hope include some sidewalk bond of yours, they call them, in the budget, because we just had a death, and it probably is not related to whether the sidewalks are clean or not, but people are walking all over the streets, Washington Street, Fair, Sixth Street, many, many main streets, people are walking in the middle of the street. It's deplorable, this has never happened before in our history. It happened beginning with Mayor Terese, it's continuing now. I remember in, even in Christmas time, people were, the city was out in force, and we had a lot of snow, it was done within a day or two, sidewalks and streets. I remember when I went to school, we still had the horse drawn plows, and most of the streets were cleared by morning. This is inexcusable, for had people, to have people walking down Washington Street in the middle of the street when it's icy out because the sidewalks aren't clear. So I hope you include that in the $30 million ARPA program, you've got a little money to spend, should be spent a little bit more wisely on sidewalk clearance, and hopefully protect the safety of people in Jamestown. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? There's a correspondence that has to be read, and before we go, I just wanted to say that to Mr. Zabrowski's point, the mayor and the comptroller, we'll look into that and formulate an answer for that. To go back to that, I'm not sure exactly what, what you're referring to, without the bill in front of me. Start, Mr. Tona, it is on our agenda tonight, we will be voting on the purchase of a bond of here this evening.
Distinguished council members, it has come to our attention that there may be some debate regarding the reappointment of our fellow Human Rights Commission member, Justin Hubbard. As a commission, we wish to convey how disappointed we would be if Mr. Hubbard would no longer be allowed to serve alongside us. We feel that it is our duty to try and convey to our elected representatives how much we value Mr. Hubbard and the ideas, thoughtfulness, and passion that he brings to our group. As a teacher, he brings a point of view regarding education that helps us better understand and address human rights issues in our schools. As a trusted vocal leader in our community, Justin is a connection between the Human Rights Commission and residents, allowing us to better recognize ongoing issues in Jamestown. As a young person of color, he offers us a perspective that the commission cannot benefit from what else we need. This is a perspective that we cannot take for granted if we wish to truly be representative of Jamestown. Disparaging opinions and discourse that differ from our personal beliefs goes against the very foundation of what the Human Rights Commission stands for. It is now our mission to silence voices that debate with our own, but to encourage and move them as a way to recognize problems in our community that need to be addressed. As a diverse group of individuals, not only racially and socio-economically, but also ideologically, we strongly oppose suppressing voices that oppose our own. Instead, we wish to embrace, learn from, and grow as a community because of them. After all, we cannot claim to help a community as we will not listen to. Again, we ask the council to please reappoint Justin Hubbard to the Human Rights Commission. We truly feel that he is a crucial asset to our commission, and to not allow him to serve would be a disservice to the city of Jamestown as a whole. Thank you for your service and consideration to the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the reports from our standing committees. Our first committee, the Finance Committee, may have the first nine resolutions will be read by Councilwoman Corruga.
I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Hi, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $425,946.88 interest on public improvement bonds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to note that this is the first of two scheduled payments with a second interest only payment due on August 1st of 2022.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Hi, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $223,856.27 interest on public improvement bond Series A.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just also to note, this is the first of two scheduled payments with a second interest only payment due on July 15, 2022.
Thank you. Any comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing Corporation Counsel Elliot Romando and Executive Assistant to the Mayor's every Altshire to attend the Night Conwitzer Legislative meeting on February 15 through 14 at the Marriott Albany in Albany, New York, for the expenses paid pursuant to Section 77 Act III of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $100,000.00 in no sense in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding a new roof on Jamestown Fire Department Station 4 located at 1010 Allen Street.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to note that this is long overdue, and we're very appreciative, we got the funding to start making these corrections and changes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $10,000.00 in no sense in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding a citywide NOS box system.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $210,513.15 in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding the purchase of 60 portable radios in the Jamestown Public Building.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $48,000.00 in no sense in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding deep retard repairs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $237,000.00 in no sense in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding a new roof on the Jamestown Parks Department building located at 115 East Fairmount Avenue.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just again, a long overdue with the...
Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
All right. The next two resolutions coming out of the Finance Committee by the Finance Committee Chair, Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $890,000.00 in no sense, $890, excuse me, in no sense in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding the purchase of various vehicles and pieces of equipment for the Department of Public Works. I just want to note also, just so everyone here, we talked about it as a council, but in the public area, we are approving the $890,000. We are not approving certain equipment, that discussion will be had upon all the other levels. Same with Resolution Number 11 for the Parks Department.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse. Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution designating $370,000.00 in no sense in the American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding the per, of various vehicles and pieces of equipment for the Parks Department.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Brackman, Corruga, I, Faulkner, Eklund, Deversa, Russell, President Hulse.
I have a resolution authorizing City Comptroller Ryan Thompson to make the following amendment to the two thousand twenty-two General Fund Budget to replace an elevator drive as follows. Increase appropriations, City Hall Building Equipment, eight point one six two zero point zero two zero zero, seven thousand two hundred dollars. Decrease appropriations, Continents Account, eight point one nine nine zero point zero four zero zero, seven thousand two hundred dollars in those terms.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing City Comptroller Ryan Thompson to attend the NYGFOA Annual Conference from April seventh through ninth at the Albany Marriott in Albany, New York with expenses paid pursuant to Section seventy-seven B of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing City Comptroller Ryan Thompson to participate in the NY class program under the terms of the NY class municipal cooperation agreement and designating a New York Cooperative Liquid Assets Security System as the passport for the city of Jamestown.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman.
Aye.
Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution suspending the hire and freeze and authorizing the filling of the position of School Resource Officer in the Jamestown Police Department. Note that this is for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year and the officer will begin in August of two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman.
Aye.
Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Eagle Radio Technologies doing business as Motorola Communication Services of Western New York NPA Incorporated for the purchase of Cory replacement Motorola Minotaur six portable radio receivers for a total amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and zero cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman.
Aye.
Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing Jeffrey Lehman, P.E., Director of Public Works, to sign an intermunicipal agreement with Chautauqua County authorizing use and access to certain city property for construction of Foot Avenue over the Shadow Coin River subject to approval of the Corporation Counsel as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman.
Aye.
Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
That concludes our resolutions from Finance. We'll move on to Public Safety and our first resolution will be sponsored by Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution reappointing Nancy Amoroso to the Office of Commissioner of Deeds for a period of two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Our next resolution will be sponsored by the Chairman of the Public Safety, May Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution requesting the Board of Public Utilities install one new one-hundred-fifty watt Cleveland L.B. Krickshire at the following location. BP, you call three-six-eight-six-zero, I'm stoked.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
That concludes our resolutions from our committees. Do you have any report of special committees? Any report of city officers? Report from councilmen on administrative boards? We do have some unfinished business, boards and commission appointments that were tabled. Yes, we're going to order those individuals.
Councilmembers, in pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Michael Penney, Inc., forty-one Local Avenue, Jamestown, New York, one-four-seven-zero-one, to be reappointed a member of the zoning board of the deal in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Overdue notice.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Councilmembers, in pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate David B. Anderson, one-twenty-six Wilson Avenue, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Overdue notice.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
Councilmembers, in pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Christine Percy, two-thirty-two East Virginia Boulevard, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Overdue notice.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
In pursuance of the Section five twenty-three dash A of the Real Property Tax Law, I do hereby nominate Deborah R. Loder Clark, forty-two Allen Dale Avenue, Jamestown, to be reappointed as a member of the Board of Assessment Review in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Andrew Nickerson, three forty-seven Broadhead Avenue, Jamestown, to be appointed a member of the Board of Electrical Examinering for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Stephen Knoll, twenty-nine Japin Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Board of Electrical Examinering in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Hennessy Mark, forty-two Hatchett Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Board of Public Utilities in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Sean Connor, one-eighty West Virginia Boulevard, Jamestown, to be appointed a member of the Board of Public Utilities in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Nay.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Nay.
Eklund.
Nay.
Deversa.
Nay.
Russell.
Aye.
President Hulse.
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the Charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Sabrina Del Stetson, four-seventeen Charles Street, Jamestown, to be appointed a member of the Board of Public Utilities in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman, Coruba.
Aye.
Faulkner.
Nay.
Eklund.
Nay.
Deversa.
Nay.
Russell.
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Thomas Nelson, twenty-one Hunter Street, Jamestown, to be appointed a member of the Plumbing Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Sean Burnhart, two ten Weston Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Plumbing Board in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate John Foden, nine Allen Dale Avenue, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Plumbing Board in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Mark Mills, three fifty-one Baker Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Plumbing Board in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Kimberly Now, twenty forty-two Shady Side Road, Lakewood, New York, one four seven five zero, to be reappointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council as the representative of the Audubon Society of Jamestown in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Barclay Ohwellman, twelve thirty-five Prentergast Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Joshua N. Miller, six two six Hazard Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Kayla Crossy, one eleven North Avenue, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Kelly Roberts, one ninety-nine Clyde Avenue, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Matthew Masasik, two oh two Beachview Avenue, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Daniel Rowe, two Westwood Drive, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Justin Hubbard, eighteen Spruce Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a, uh, if it's a question or a comment, um, we read a letter by the Human Rights Commission. The question I had was, was there a forum when that letter was written? I don't know if that can be answered now, or maybe at a later date. And if Mr. Hubbard has the full, um, support of all the commission members, um, I didn't see any signatures on that letter.
I can speak to that. So yes, we had a whole forum with the, um, support of not another legal letter and commission members currently. The other two just never got back to us. Um, the back email was, the letter was finalized last night.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Now, clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba?
Nay.
Faulkner?
Nay.
Eklund?
Nay.
Deversa?
Nay.
Russell?
Nay.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Kimberly Knight, one fourteen Service, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Uh, Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Doby McIntyre, sixty-seven Hatchess Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Human Rights Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye.
In pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Tammy Graham Reiner, four nineteen Crossing Street, Jamestown, to be appointed as member and chair of the Police Reform Strategic Implementation Committee in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. Um, the term to expire will be December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye. We'll now move on to the mayor's conference, uh, councilmatic appointments. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and vote collectively? So we've got Councilwoman Sheldon. Do I have a motion? I gotta head.
Um, councilmembers, in pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Regina Brackman, eleven Genesee Street, appointed to the Board of Public Utilities. Jeffrey Russell, seven hundred Lakeview Avenue, appointed to the Board of Public Utilities. Jeffrey Russell, seven hundred Lakeview Avenue, appointed to the Jamestown Local Development Corporation. Kimberly Athlone, reappointed to the Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission, uh, third between Paris Avenue, Pollock Street. Andrew Faulkner, one hundred Pearl Avenue, appointed to the Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission. Brent Sheldon, eighty-three Duran Avenue, reappointed to the Riverfront Management Council. Marie Caruba, nineteen Winter Avenue, reappointed to the Fenton Historical Society Board of Trustees in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The terms for which said appointments are to be made will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Now, I think the motion to vote collectively. So we've got Councilwoman Sheldon. Clerk, please pull the council and we'll vote collectively.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye. Now we'll vote on the candidates. Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolson?
Aye. Now we'll move on to new business. We do have three resolutions on the new business. Uh, the first resolution will be sponsored by Councilwoman Caruba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a personnel agreement with the Jamestown Professional Firefighters Association, Local One Three Seven, for the period covered January one, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, subject to the review and approval of the corporation council there.
Are there any questions or comments?
Asking for permission for recusal on the ground that my husband is a retired member of that union. Therefore, I deem coming in straight.
You vote on the recusal? Pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolson?
Aye. The mayor has asked to yield. I'm trying to, I'm trying to him, so.
Thank you, President Dolson. It's okay with the council. I'd like to talk about the police and fire so we can save some time. It's been a long day. Uh, just to provide some commentary on the two personnel agreements that you will be voting on this evening. Uh, the first one is the fire contract, contract with the Professional Firefighters Association, uh, which will run through twenty twenty-four, including this year. Uh, as you know, the fire department has been, uh, negotiated all the way up until this year for their contract, uh, and by that, by this year and last year. Now it'll be twenty twenty-two. Uh, so this will run, uh, from twenty-one to twenty twenty-four uh, for a pay increase, uh, for the years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three at two point five percent, with an increase in, uh, twenty twenty-four at two point seven five percent. Uh, with the fire contract, there are raises in healthcare, which brings them in line with other units. It gradually raises up from twenty-one percent to twenty-three percent by the last year. Uh, in addition, there's additional pay for, uh, train officers as well as EMT certificate holders. Uh, but what is really unique about this contract is we were able to negotiate the end of lifetime healthcare for the fire department. There are only two unions left in the city that maintain lifetime healthcare for a member and his spouse, uh, for the rest of their lives. Uh, the fire is one of the last ones along the police. Uh, under this agreement, uh, the fire has agreed to end lifetime healthcare at Medicare age, uh, as well as run second ambulance in the city to start to work towards solving our issues with EMS. Uh, we have negotiated an increase in four firefighters. Just to give the council and public a little understanding about the numbers, adding four firefighters does cost the city an additional one point two three million dollars over four years. However, with the removal of lifetime healthcare for every new officer we hire in the city, we will save over two million dollars per firefighter we hire each year. It's a significant amount. It also runs the second ambulance service, another revenue generating source, uh, for the city. Uh, we've all recognized and appreciate that there isn't a problem with EMS here in the city. And being able to ensure that you're able to get an ambulance in a, a quickest amount of time has been very difficult. Uh, even trying to find private providers, uh, we've had very little response, uh, as you all know. Uh, so for us to be able to come to an agreement to run not only a second ambulance, but increase our ability to treat, uh, EMS services as well as add firefighting staff to do so, uh, as well as ending lifetime healthcare, which is something that we've not been able to do for thirty-some years, is a really big thing. Under our police contract, which will also be up tonight, although we do not remove lifetime healthcare, uh, it does provide similar raises going from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three at a two point five percent increase, with an increase in two point seven five percent in twenty twenty-four. Uh, there is a, a raise to healthcare to twenty-three percent, which does bring us in line with other unions, an increased deductible, an increase in agility bonuses uh, for officers that are making sure they're able to pass physical fitness, uh, exams. Similar contract, it does not add staffing. It does not remove lifetime healthcare, uh, simply like the fire contract. Uh, so, uh, both, we're very, very excited to be able to say that with tonight's contracts, uh, that we have as a city finally negotiated all union contracts, which would put every single employee in the city uh, in voting on tonight under a current contract. As you all remember, when we took office, uh, police and fire were many, many years behind. Uh, so we're proud and very, very excited, uh, to do this tonight. Uh, I commend our negotiating team, our comptroller, our city attorney, uh, who have worked diligently to try to get these contracts in order and make sure that every employee doesn't really have to worry about raises for the next several years. I appreciate it. Uh, I would ask council that you, um, vote with your conscience tonight. I know that it is a big expense to add additional firefighters, uh, but this is truly a way forward, uh, one step forward for the city in working to deal with EMS crisis that we continue to plague, plague us, day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to clarify while I applaud, you know, the dictatorial thought by the city and the union. I just, for clarification purposes, um, the two million dollars is not applicable until the year one T forty-two. Am I correct, comptroller?
Twenty sixty-one?
Twenty sixty-one is the actual year we would see the annual savings, but it is a good move forward and something to be known. But there is not a significant financial savings for the city at this time in the mayor's position. Is that clear?
Thank you.
I would say after that, the one point two million that the mayor talked about with the, uh, expenses, obviously, over the next four years, uh, where the councilperson, Eklund, said that, you know, the savings on the lifetime insurance, which, um, I, you know, I commend the mayor's team, Ryan, for negotiating that, be able to negotiate that away. Uh, like Tim said, that's a very long-term savings and we're looking at, uh, a cost of one point two million. But my concern is, is we'll be back here in two or three years. We'll have a roomful of firefighters because we're going to be laying people off. That's my concern. And I don't want to see that happen.
Any other questions? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba?
Nay.
Faulkner?
Nay.
Uh, Deversa?
Nay.
Russell?
Nay.
President Dolson?
Aye. And I'll move on to councilman, councilwoman Eklund for the next two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a personnel agreement with the Kendall Club Police Benevolent Association for the period covering January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, subject to the review and approval of the corporation council as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
President Dolson, I ask that I be recusing this vote due to the fact that I'm a retired member of the Jamestown Police Department and have a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Clerk, please pull the council, um, Councilman Russell's recusal.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman? Uh, Caruba? Aye. Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolson?
Aye. Clerk, please pull the council, um, give us your opinion.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolson?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution designating one hundred and fifty-three thousand and two hundred and fifty-nine dollars in no sense in the American Rescue Plan Act lost revenue funds to replace the nineteen seventy-nine Bombardier S P dash forty-eight of the Department of Public Water. Just note that this piece of equipment, her path, is readily available and will be purchased, and though this is separate from the previous eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?